Chair was a sleaze nod.
Good evening, everyone. We will call our meeting to order. Welcome to the December 1st, 2021, meeting of the City of Murfreesboro Planning Commission. Our first item is to determine a quorum, which we have everybody here tonight. Thank you very much. So, next, we will go to old business. We do have one item under old business. That is revisions to the Murfreesboro Street Design Specifications. City of Murfreesboro Public Infrastructure Department is the applicant. And Ms. Emerson, good evening.
Good evening, how are you all? These are the same revisions that I presented in the November meeting with one slight adjustment. You should have in front of you a detailed DW5. And I realized that since the last meeting, I left off the definitions of what C, D, and E were. They're no different than the definitions that were in the previous manual. I just accidentally left them off the detail with the revised set. So, I'm asking for adoption of these revisions tonight with an effective date of January 1st, 2022.
Okay.
If you have any questions, I'm available to answer.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Emerson or any comments on any of this?
Just for clarification on the motion, do we need to include? We need to somehow include these revisions, right?
Right, that's, yeah, that's, so the revisions that are outlined in the agenda, the detailed revisions, now that is not a revision. That was the same as the old one, it's just a updated detail.
All right.
Including.
Yeah, if anybody, we have any questions?
No.
All right, I'm gonna move, we approve it to start to be effective as of January 1st, 2022, with all the inclusions of this information.
Thank you.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Moving on to our public hearings and recommendations to City Council. We do have nine items on here tonight, but the first item has been withdrawn by the applicant. So, this was an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 6.4 acres located along Majesty Drive and Sisero Drive. That item was withdrawn by the applicant. If there happens to be anybody here in the audience that was here to speak on that item, just know it's been withdrawn. So, anything else we need to do to move on on that? We don't need any further action.
The applicant's here, if you have any questions for him, but other than that, the public here, or the item has been withdrawn, so there's no need to conduct a public hearing tonight.
Do we expect it to come back?
I don't believe so. The applicant is here and he can, he can, he can speak to that, but I don't believe he is planning on resubmitting. If you wouldn't mind, just state your name and address and answer Mr. LaLance's question.
My name is Sayyab Wong Senpan Siri. And the address that I am applying for is, they don't have any address yet, just 6.4 acre. And I just decided to withdraw it for tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out, just for clarification, we appreciate it. Okay, moving on then, we'll have our first public hearing tonight. Will be regarding a zoning application to amend the West Lawn PUD to allow additional uses within the area identified as C3 within the program book on approximately 23.3 acres located along Veterans Parkway and Blackman Road. Oscar Properties LLC is the applicant. And since we understand Ms. Green's having a little trouble with her voice tonight, Mr. Blomley is gonna present this for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'll try to do Ms. Green justice here. We, we hope her voice gets better soon. This is a request to amend the West Lawn PUD. The West Lawn PUD is along both sides of Veterans Parkway, just south of Interstate 840. The portion of the PUD that we're, that we've received a request to amend is the area in the diagonal, with the diagonal lines on it. So, it's the area that is to the east of Veterans Parkway and to the west of Blackman Road. It's the area identified in the current program book as C2 and C3. Mr. Taylor will give a presentation in a moment to further explain this. But the crux of what they're proposing to do is modify the proposed layout. Right now, the layout has more of a, kind of a shopping center feel with large buildings. So, they're, what they want to be able to do is to submit a preliminary plat in the near future that would carve up this property into multiple commercial lots instead of, instead of larger commercial parcels that we would see for larger shopping centers that, that, that we don't see get built, a whole, a whole lot these days. Also, what they're proposing to do is to amend the uses, the list of permitted uses for this portion of the PUD. So, areas C2 and C3 would be combined into one area with one set of permitted uses. And that, those permitted uses are outlined in the pattern book that has been submitted and has been included in the agenda materials. As I mentioned, this would also enable them to, to divide it up into more lots than what the pattern book is proposed for, or the pattern book contains right now. With that being said, we'll need to conduct a public hearing on this matter tonight after Mr. Taylor gives a presentation with a little bit more detail about the proposed uses that he is proposing to include for this area of the PUD.
Thank you, Ma'am, Mr. Blomley. I'm Matt Taylor from SEC. I've got Mr. John Harney, the owner's representative, with me as well. And the request, as Mr. Blomley said, we really wanted to clarify the uses on this side of the road. There was a little bit of ambiguity. And so, what we've done is we copied the allowable uses on the C, from the C4, which is directly across Veterans Parkway over to this side. I think those were amended and clarified about two years ago. There's a couple of projects under construction on that side now, actually. And then, in regards to the layout, there were some very specific building shapes that were just fairly unrealistic to, to build. And so, looking to revise that, so it's a little more realistic. So, outside of that, I'd be happy to answer any questions now or after the hearing. And we, the original application, the original PUD required us to comply with the GDO requirements. And we are keeping that same requirement in here. We're not trying to have lesser quality. We still want to be of very high quality, very aesthetically pleasing development. So, we're keeping all those same commitments on landscaping, architecture, everything.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Questions for Mr. Taylor before we open the public hearing?
I can go ahead and ask a question. Just, I'm going off of memory when this originally got zoned, and it's been a few years, so I'm kinda, but it seems like I remember something that was, that we did on that original zoning that kind of, that would have been maybe like a commitment from the, from the owner to, to like not have the back of a, of a building facing the road or something like that. I mean, are there?
So, I, I'm not sure about the commitment now. I know on the other side, over in C4 and C5, which on the other side, I know there, we had to commit to constructing a berm and landscaping so that whenever, because we've got houses directly across the street from that. That may have been what you're referring to. On this side, I do not recall anything. I would say that our design guidelines and zoning ordinance both either prohibit that or require a la, a large landscape buffer if a rear of a building's facing a road, so.
Yeah, okay. And it may have been the, the property to the north that I'm remembering as well.
Okay, that one I was not a part of, so I'm not sure.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. All right, we'll start out here for our public hearings tonight. As you can see, we have a lot of people here that would like to speak on some of the items here this evening. For any of the public hearings that you would like to speak, you will come forward to the podium when we open the public hearing, state your name and your address, and then you will have three minutes to make any of your comments to the Planning Commission. We do ask that you make all your comments directly to the Planning Commission, that you do not make comments or ask questions to other members of the audience or the developers or et cetera. And we will take note of all the questions that come up during the public hearings, and we will address all of those questions, or attempt to address all of those questions, at the end of each public hearing. So, you'll just see us taking notes about all your questions that you ask, and we will not answer them immediately at that time, but we will, like I say, do our best to answer them at the end of the public hearing. So, with that, we will open our first public hearing tonight and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak regarding the zoning application to amend the West Lawn PUD. Anybody at all here for that public hearing? And seeing none, we will close that public hearing and ask the Planning Commission if you had any further questions or comments regarding this application.
None for me.
There are none, I'll make a motion that we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Our next item, item C, is a mandatory referral for the abandonment of right-of-way of a segment of an alley approximately 220 linear feet in length, located north of Bridge Avenue between King's Highway and Battle Avenue. John Trout is the applicant. Ms. Smith, good evening.
Good evening, Commission. Let me just scroll to that particular page. So, this particular item is an alleyway that is located, here we are. You can get that up on the screen. Here we are. Along Bridge Avenue. The applicant, John Trout, is not here this evening. But the area that you see here in red is a contiguous area that is normally what you would see for an alleyway, but there is no alleyway constructed there. Staff reached out to all the utility companies. There are no utilities located in this particular area. And so, we are looking at this mandatory referral that's related to the next item involving these two properties on the side. And the staff had actually asked for this additional area to the north of that to be included because it is contiguous with those other properties. So, with that, staff would recommend approval of this particular abandonment area and looks to the Planning Commission to make that recommendation for abandonment.
And there are some conditions of approval included in the staff comments that we would recommend as well.
Okay. Any questions? All right, we'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak regarding this mandatory referral.
Good afternoon. My name is Shirley Wilson, and I live at 316 Bridge Avenue. And where that red mark was, it looked like it's right in, coming, it looked like it comes right to my back door, almost. I didn't know what any of that meant on that map when I got it in the mail, so I thought I would come and see what this, you know, what the zoning was about. And I didn't know anything, ever known anything about an alley. I moved there in 1984. So, I didn't know anything about an alley out there. That's what they say. I know it's not now.
So, what does this, to look like is what she's asking.
Okay, and I'm sorry, can you give me your address again? 316?
316 Bridge Avenue.
Bridge, okay.
I'm on the corner of Bridge and Valley.
Okay. We'll, we'll look at that on the map again when we get that up there and confirm that for you. And so, you can learn a little bit more about exactly what it's gonna be.
Yeah.
Okay? Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak on this item? Okay, if not, we'll close the public hearing. And Ms. Smith, if you don't mind, if we can get that back up and just show her and explain.
So, if I recall, you probably live at this property here next to...
She has the L-shaped property right next to it.
Oh. You're on this one? Perfect, so you're asking about this area. So, that area, when we look at the aerials, it does not have any existing roadway. Anticipation was probably years ago, this portion might have connected before some other improvements were involved. And anytime we look at a zone change, a subdivision map, we try to clean up any old unused right-of-way that the city doesn't maintain, nor are there any improvements. And when you look in the field, it looks like there is no alleyway there. So, what we did do, though, is we confirmed with all of the various entities that there are no utilities in that area, so they're fine with the city actually going forward with a full abandonment in those areas. And the only time that those areas would be added to those adjacent properties is if they ever got a new map. So, if you look at the conditions of approval, if there's a new map, for example, recorded here, half of that alleyway would go to that property owner. And then, if any of these neighboring properties were to create a map, they would get those areas as well. But at this point in time, this allows the abandonment to occur so that the city doesn't have on the books city-owned right-of-way that's really not used or maintained.
So, make, make sure, for, for clarification purposes, you, you may be able to say this better than I can, but I think, you know, what, what I think everybody needs to know is that that red spot right there is currently owned by the city. I mean, it, that, that right-of-way is actually city-owned right-of-way going through there that's been on the books for a really long time. We're taking it off the books of the city. So, it's not gonna be ours. When we abandon it, we're getting rid of it, okay? So, just, is that correct?
That is correct. And so, generally how those work, so in this area, you'll notice this area is a thinner abandonment area. Most likely, over time, part of that was abandoned, and it didn't go further back into the property. So, traditionally, that abandonment area, let's say it's 20 feet, gets split down the middle between the property owners that are adjacent to both sides. So, everybody gains a little property.
Can you clarify for me then, and probably the people in the audience, when you said half of that red line goes to the current property owner? Is, is that what's gonna happen? Is, right now with this particular thing, when we get rid of it, basically, half of that red line will now be back into their possession?
Legally, legally, and I may have to clarify with Mr. Ives, but my understanding is legally, a document gets recorded to a deed to abandon those areas, but it's not merged into those areas until a map is recorded.
I'm sorry, I just don't know what that means, when a map is recorded.
And when, when there, if, if there is ever a redevelopment and a, a re-subdivision plat is recorded, then physically, that area would be shown to be part of the two lots. But we will, and normally, we do abandon down a center line, half to each property. There are cases that are different. But in this situation, we have no reason to do anything other than abandon roughly, now, as you can see, the one corner property, it, there's only half of the alley left there, the one closest to Bridge Avenue. So, that half is gonna go to the property on the Battle Avenue side. And then, the other, where it's a wider mark there, those two will be, those properties will be, the alley at those properties will be divided down the middle, half to each. But there would be no requirement that any of these, other than Mr. Trout, who's redeveloping, the other landowners do not have to do anything. There'll be a quitclaim deed recorded, deeding to you, however many feet that is, half of that alley. You don't have to do anything with it, it won't cost you anything. You don't need to change a fence or anything if you don't want to. But someday, if someone does redevelop that property, then it will show as incorporated into that lot.
So, it'll look the same. There'll be really no change to the, to the look of the property, is my understanding. Okay? All right, and I'm sure if you have further questions, you can call the, the staff office next, you know, so confused on what day it is. Any day during the week, and I'll be happy to answer your questions. All right. Any other questions from the Planning Commission? And if not, we're ready for a motion. Thank you.
There are no questions, I'll make a motion, we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next will be the zoning application for the same item for approximately 0.53 acres located along Bridge Avenue and King's Highway to be rezoned from RS8 to RS6. John Trout is the applicant. Ms. Smith?
So, this is the companion application to the one that you just saw. So, if you look at the aerial map, the two items in red are currently RS8 designated. The corner lot actually is a vacant lot, and the lot to the north has an existing single-family home on it. In this case, we are looking at that abandonment area getting the same zoning as a potential change of zoning in that area. And the intent that has been expressed by the applicant would be to reconfigure the two lots into three single-family homes, keeping the existing home on the property here, removing the garage structure so that it would have three homes in that area. When you look at the zoning and the surrounding project areas, it is a good transition between the RS8 that's in the adjacent neighbor here on these sides to the RM12 Light Industrial on the corner, and then one of the community center buildings on the opposite side. So, in looking at that, Mr. Trout was not able to be here this evening for it, but he would have to file a separate plat map to go forward. But he has to have the zoning in place first before he can show that he can get that constructed. At one time, he had talked about doing townhomes. We did not recommend townhomes in this location. We thought that that was a, not an appropriate use. And an RS6, though, would be an appropriate use at this location, which Bridge Avenue and King's Highway are major thoroughfares in the city's future plans. And in future plans, we would also require that they dedicate a small corner here for any signalization equipment in this particular area. With that, this has been noted as a public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any questions before we open the public hearing? If none, we will open the public hearing on this item and ask if anybody would like to speak regarding the zoning application for the 0.53 acres located along Bridge Avenue and King's Highway. Anybody at all like to speak, please come forward. And seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Comments, questions, and/or motions from the Planning Commission.
Motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, item E is a zoning application to amend the PRD zoning for the Arbers PRD for approximately 78.25 acres located along Compton Road, and to rezone approximately 0.5 acres along Compton Road from PRD to RS15. Middle Tennessee Developers LLC is the applicant. Ms. Smith?
Good evening, Commission. As you stated, the location of this project is off of Compton Road, as shown here on the city zoning map. It is currently zoned, PRD has been zoned that since 2006. So, the application, when you look at our general plan designation, is designated as a suburban residential use. The zoning in that area, excuse me, not the zoning, the suburban residential character looks at a density between 2 to 3.54. looks at a density between 2 to 3.54 units to the acre. When we look at the PRD in this area, it is surrounded on all sides by the county, with the exception of Compton Road coming out to the front edge of the property is actually in the city limits in those areas in this section here. When you look at the prior approval for reference, it had about 207 units. That particular project also comes off of Bushman Creek, where there is some flood plain in place from our major transportation plan. When you look at Compton Road, at some point, they are looking at that being widened to a five-lane roadway. And they are looking at, with their proposal, three connection points to the existing streets that are there, which is in line with the city's subdivision regulations, and then a future stub street here to the east. You may have recalled, the original plan book showed this particular layout, which after they had their neighborhood meeting, they modified slightly. So you can kind of see the difference between the two. It has more 12,000 square foot lots. They went from 15 to 44. 12,000 square foot lots around the majority of the periphery, with the exception of this side adjacent to the Emery Court residence. And they now have 133, 7,000 square foot lots in place. Additionally, you may recall, some of the comments from our infrastructure group talked about not having as long, straight streets. So again, if you look back to the prior version, these streets were very straight coming through. They've modified that plan to jog in the streets as well as not having this street come all the way through to the second street in the back. From a phasing plan, they've changed it slightly to accommodate that layout. Where you can see everything in blue here is what they proposed in Phase 1 to be constructed. They do have a park amenity in the center of the subdivision, and then some walking trails and drainage basin areas that generally follow the floodplain areas. When you look at the layout of their plans for the 12,000 square foot lots, they have ones with a 85-foot minimum frontage width, and ones with a 60-foot frontage width. So on these ones, you have the 60-foot. Here, you have an 85-foot. And then the 7,000 square foot lots would have a frontage of 60 feet as well. Lastly, as far as things that we've included in our staff report, is we did look at, and I think somebody asked what the units per developable acre was, or net density, which would be 3.31 units to the acre, because there's about 24.7 acres of the entire 78.5 that is considered open space. That's open space for drainage, some of the floodplain, as well as the step fields and the amenities that they are providing. Staff did put down several things that we would like to continue to work on. Some of them just may not be actually spelled out or labeled on these drawings. We think that most of them are being met, but we would like to continue working through those items. And with that, we would like to invite up the applicant's engineer to go over their project a little bit more specifically.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Chair Lady Jones, members of the planning commission, and Matt Taylor from SEC. I've got with me my client, Mr. Steve Pierce of Middle Tennessee Development as well. We do have a brief presentation over the requested PRD amendment for the Arbers at Compton. As Ms. Smith said, it's about a 78-acre piece of property on the north side of Compton, right at the intersection of Emery. So on this drawing, it's highlighted in the pink and the white dash lines. The Compton is shown in the east-west direction on the light blue, and Emery is shown in the yellow and the blue lines that run north-south. And for a little bit of reference, Last Cass's Pike is shown on the right-hand side in the orange. It is zoned PRD, as Ms. Smith said. This happened in about 2006. Got good access to water, gas, electric at multiple points for the property. This particular project will utilize a step system for the sanitary sewer. And then the site generally drains from the south and east toward the west and north before it enters Bushman Creek. Site today is primarily open pasture land. We've got some woods or forested areas to the north and northeast sides of the property. There is this existing house that will be taken down with this project. It is closer to Compton. And then this is Compton looking back west, so the property itself would be to the right of this particular picture. Some of the existing houses around us, this is on Emery Court to our south and east. This is in Lake Brook subdivision to our west. And then this is along Dutton, which is also to the south and east. As Ms. Smith said, the previous PRD was approved back in 2006. It had 207 detached homes. It was a mixture of 10 and 12,000 square foot lots. That density of about 2.65 units to the acre. It had an HOA, all underground utilities, and about seven acres of permanent open space that was going to be utilized for amenity as well as detention. And then those house plans started at a minimum of 1,700 square feet in size, and were about 75% masonry. And their amenities consisted of pavilions, walking trails, and playgrounds. Our proposed plan, the biggest difference here is that we're going to utilize a step system instead of the sewer, since it was to the west and was never extended up. So our new plan decreases the density of about 30 units to the, or about 30 homes for 177 total. We're still all detached homes on individual lots of record. As Ms. Smith said, that's a mixture of 7,000 and 12,000 square foot lots. We've tried to locate the 12,000 or the larger lots around the perimeter of the property, with the smaller lots being toward the central part. That gives a net density of about 2.26 units to the acre. Every homeowner here will have to be a member of a mandatory HOA. That HOA will be managed by a third-party association. They'll be responsible for enforcing the restrictive covenants as well as maintaining all of our open space. The step system itself will be constructed by the developer and then handed over to Murfreesboro Water Resources to own and maintain for perpetuity. All of our utilities on site will be underground, utilities just like before. This particular plan proposes to preserve about three and a half times more permanent open space than the previous plan at just under 25 acres. That's inclusive of detention areas, step areas, as well as amenity and birmingham areas along Compton Road. Home architecture is still a mixture of one- and two-story homes. The one, any one-stories will have a minimum square footage of 1,700 square feet in size. And any two-story will have a minimum of 2,000 square feet. Again, they're on individual lots of record. We anticipate these being front-entry garages. And the setbacks that we're proposing are identical to the previous PRD, and they're very similar to probably 95% of the requests you see up here. 35-foot to the garage, five-foot sides, and 20-foot rears. Our homes will be 100% masonry. The only vinyl will be in trim and soffit areas. We've worked very closely with staff to improve some of the elevations. We've committed to having a water table on all four sides of all of our homes. That water table will be brick or stone. I feel like we had a pretty good palette here to start with, but we worked with staff to provide some interest and variation and quality design on each of these homes. We did that through a variety of materials, a variety of colors, and a lot of detailing. And so you'll see the porches are very up front. The design of these homes calls the door, the garage door, to be more muted. And so I think they're very attractive. You'll see a lot of the detailing with those corbels and the way the porches and water tables reach out. Couple of examples of single-story. Amenities, we used the original PRD as kind of our starting point, and then we tried to revise and make it better. We increased the usable area by about three times. We've preserved a large, open field area for children to come play, have picnics, play football, baseball, soccer in this larger area on the top here. We've also incorporated a fireplace, which we think will be a very unique area in the community. We've kept the playground. We've also kept the walking trails, added more trails, made them more functional, incorporated seating areas along those trails as well. We've also kept the birmingham area along Compton, as well as some buffer area there, and incorporated more of a horse rail fence for an aesthetic treatment at our entrance. Here's an example of that birmingham and buffering along Compton. And then one thing during our neighborhood meeting, several people asked about preserving trees along the perimeter in their backyard. So we stepped back, reviewed our concept plan, and we incorporated everywhere you see a red line here, a 10-foot common area strip outside the lots. And so that will be permanently maintained by the HOA, so the homeowners cannot go in there and disturb those trees. So I think that, hopefully that alleviates the concern there. And then access points, our main access point would be on Compton, shown here in red. This will be a full three-lane section on our road, and then we'll be constructing a full complement of left and right turn lanes on Compton at the time that we make this connection. We are also making connections to the existing three stub streets. Two of those will be out of Lake Brook on the west side, and then one into Emery. And those are shown here in blue. And then working with staff, we eliminated one of the stubs to the east from the previous plan and consolidated that more into the central part of the development, shown here in yellow. And then wanted to point out, the green at the north side of the property, we are not connecting to that road. It's a private, private roads, we don't have any rights to, but did want to point out, we are not making that connection. One thing that came out in the neighborhood meeting was a request by the residents that we studied to see if a signal would be warranted at Emery and Compton. So that location right there. And we got that result back from our traffic consultant today. That signal is not warranted today, nor is it warranted after the project is completed. We did host a neighborhood meeting about a month ago, roughly. Had very good participation. I think we had about 50 people attend, had a lot of good dialogue, I felt like. So several changes came out of that neighborhood meeting. One was the traffic study update on the signal warrant that I just mentioned. We also increased the home square footage for the two stories, going from 1,700 up to 2,000. We also added the 10-foot common area to preserve the trees around the perimeter. And then we added more of the 12,000 square foot lots and located those around the perimeter. Some of the other concerns that we heard during that meeting, which we did not make revisions to, we feel like they're either already addressed in the plan satisfactorily or will be with construction plans. So some of that was drainage, which we have an abundance of planned area for, which we do a very detailed design at construction plan stage. Density or the number of homes, we feel like we've already cut the density substantially from the previous plan, and that this is in line with the future land use growth map. We also heard people's concerns that we were going to annex their property. As you all know, we cannot do that unless somebody requests that, so this does not affect county or city annexation with this request. There was quite a bit of discussion on our connection points to the existing streets. And I simply explained to the neighbors that I am complying with the subdivision regulations there, and I do not have a choice in that. And then there were some concerns about environmental concerns, such as streams or wetlands on the property. We've already completed those studies and have letters of concurrence, or agreement, if you will, from the Corps and TDEC, verifying that we do not have any jurisdictional features on the property. So I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after the hearing.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
The, there are some of those RS12 lot, or 12,000 square foot lots that are the, kind of the more narrow than the others. I think you said there was some that were 60 and some that were 85, or 65 and 80. What is that mix? Of those 47 lots that are RS, that are 12,000 square foot lots, how many of those have the 60-foot?
I do not know that off the top of my head. I would have to go in and measure that. I can certainly do that during the public hearing and have that answer for you.
Looks like maybe those ones up at the northwest corner, does that sound...
Those do look a little skinnier to me. The ones that are along the western side in the middle of the property look wider. The ones in the northwest corner, those appear skinnier, but a lot deeper, so they'd have a lot deeper backyard essentially. And we did look at a couple of options up in that corner in that we could, we looked at leaving them as 6,000 or 7,000 square foot lots, and then making more green space or common area behind them. We felt like the 10-foot common space, keeping the tree row, achieved the same thing and give our future homeowners a better backyard, or a bigger backyard, I should say. So there's a little trade-off right there.
I have a quick question for Matt and staff. In staff comment 2A, you talk about proposed architectural materials. Is that in reference to the brick that you requested around the perimeter? Can you, can one or both of you touch on that?
So I talked to my client about that, and we just, we like the variety. We like the design that we have right now between the cement board and the stone, and just the mix. And so that was a preference, if you will, on the detail that my client and myself personally, we just like that look a little better.
Ms. Smith?
Yeah, so what we were looking at is, when you looked at the perimeter around the project site in the prior project, the prior project had a lot more brick facade. And we just felt if the seven lots coming into the property were maybe of an all-brick facade material, that those might help transition for those existing neighbors. But that's really a call, I think, for the public hearing and the public discussion, because design is always subjective. But that's what staff was looking at from that standpoint.
Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, we will open this public hearing. I'm going to remind everyone that wants to speak to please come forward to the podium, state your name and address. Again, you do have three minutes to speak, because we do have a lot of people here, obviously, that want to speak tonight. Make all your comments to the planning commission. And again, we'll make note of any questions you have or comments you'd like us to address, and we will, again, attempt to address all those questions at the end of the public hearing. So we now open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak regarding this zoning application.
Good evening. My name's Melvin Cunningham. I live at 1148 Lakes Edge Drive. That is where they're going to, my understanding, open the dead-end street into this project. And we have some concerns, or I have some concerns, of property value, because in our subdivision, we have subdivision rules that we have to have 60% brick, not siding, to go in there. And they're going to open that up, and we have a concern of the value of our homes decreasing. Now, I understand the developers, you know, develop, but a lot of time, developers sell their projects. And what I made a promise as a developer may change if it's sold to somebody else. And so we're concerned with that. I had some pictures you ought to look at. They show the street that they're opening up into this subdivision. Our subdivision will increase traffic tremendously. Not only the traffic of people living there, but of their friends coming and going. Our neighborhood is pretty much a senior neighborhood. We do have some children that live in the neighborhood. And those streets are not wide enough to handle a lot of traffic that may come through there. And we have that concern. Also, you increased the number of people. It's been my experience, you can increase the crime rate. Not necessarily saying people who are moving there are going to be in crime, but they're... who are moving there are going to be in crime, but their visitors or their guests, we don't know. But with that traffic moving in there, has some concern. And my other concern, besides that, is the drainage. I think all these houses are going to be on slab, and I understand they're going to go through some kind of filter, that I don't really understand about the filter. But when you get that number of people in there, and it may work if it doesn't rain, what happens if it rains and it floods? I think there's a showing of flooding in our subdivision there. Is that water still drinkable? Will it pass EPA? Those are some concerns that I have about what's going on in there. Because right now, if you go in our subdivision, it's quiet. It will not be anymore. So, plus, with the street being small, we don't have sidewalks. And that's a concern for seniors that takes walks every day, walk the animals, and children playing with bicycles, little toy cars. That's a concern.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
My name is Keith Klein. I live at thirty-four thirty-one Lake Brook Drive. I would echo all of the concerns that the gentleman just stated. My wife, Megan, and I, we are one of the younger families. Our children range from ages nine to six to two months. And we use, and other people use, these cul-de-sac streets as the safe areas to play. We taught our boys to ride their bikes there. We see people walking their dogs there. It's nice that the new neighborhood will have sidewalks. We don't. We have to get off to the side of the road as it is now, when there's two vehicles passing, and the traffic increase is very concerning. And I don't know what the studies are. Are there any traffic studies on what this anticipation will be? Two car per house, friends, and so on. So that's the main concern for us, is the traffic. We're in the county, we're in this neighborhood for a reason. We like the quiet neighborhood, one way in, one way out. Everybody's made it through the emergencies with one form of egress. And it seems to me that, looking at the map, if the developer would give up a little profit, there's a chance to eliminate a lot or two right here, and create a second form of exit on their own property, which may alleviate, if we can eliminate using the stubs. They could have two forms of exit from that property on their own property without affecting the county neighbors that want to stay in the county. My last question would be, how does the city interact with the county when they make these decisions? Sure, let's stub into this county neighborhood. It's what we do. Well, you're on, that's true, on the city project, but you're surrounded by county projects, so how does that decision get made? Unilaterally, or is there some communication and cooperation with the county? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Who's next?
Hugh Dixon, thirteen seventy-nine Compton Road. And I don't hear very good, and I'm not sure what all has been said, and I hope I don't repeat something here. But I, right across the road from me, they're making a new, more houses over there. And if you drive by on Compton Road, it's puzzling what they're doing over there, but they're really excavating, and I'm sure that their purpose is to drain the area, because when it rains, the water accumulates on their side. So there, that's going to, for sure, make more water going down to the area that they're developing here. And the thing that I'm concerned about, really, is do they have a plan, they have a plan to drain the area? However, if it doesn't work out, that their plan works out, and it's, then people wind up getting flood, do we have a system in there that will allow compensation, and who's responsible if they do have? And the idea of it is being that if we have flooding because of what they did, or what they're doing, and I want to know who's responsible, and if there is a recourse to this.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dixon.
Good afternoon. My name is Penny Reed, R-E-E-D. I live at thirty-four thirty-two Lake Brook. I have, I want to tell you a little bit about the traffic issues in that subdivision, since I live right on Lake Brook Road. If you turn off of Compton Road, of course, you know there's only one entrance and one exit combined, so you have only one way in and out. All the emergency traffic, the fire, the police department use Compton Road to enter into the, into the east side of Rutherford County. And they go down that road lick split. There is no left turn lane into Lake Brook, so you have to wait for the traffic to come over the hill to turn left into, and people always pass you on the right while you're sitting there trying to turn left. And that's a shoulder over there, and they just fly past you. To let you know a little bit about Compton, you said, the plan said that there was no entrance into Lake Brook. That's not true. If you enter into this with the plan from Lakes Edge and Bushnell, you'll end up on Lakewood, or you won't get out the subdivision. So they do have a channel, so that if they come in from their subdivision on Bushnell and Lakes Edge, it will go on Lake Brook. Now, I walk Lake Brook every day, and if you look in the thirty-four hundred block, those houses on the west side back up to Bushman Creek, that is off floodplain back there. So those houses were built quite close to the road. They have very short driveways, and people have to back out into Lake Brook to leave their property. Also, any service businesses, or any people that come to visit, have to park on Lake Brook. Lake Brook, you, two cars can pass, but there can't be a person walking, because you have to step off in the ditch, and they're deep ditches, because we have a drainage issue, which has been spoken about. And those drainage dishes, from the edge of the pavement, all the way down to the bottom of the ditch, so there's no place to pull off of the road. Let's see. When we have a rain event, the water that runs down my driveway from the property behind me, which is going up toward the new development, runs down very quickly and fast, and it doesn't come from my house, because all my house water is piped out of the gutters into the front of the property. So all that land, water is coming down my driveway, it's coming from high in my house, from the east side of the house, east side property. I think these safety issues about entering on these Bushnell and Lakes Edge earth should be the design of the property development, and not our responsibility. Since we are a county road, I don't think that they should be able to do that. And if you, I don't know if y'all know about, there's a subdivision back behind us also. It's called the Falls at East Fork, and they also go through our subdivision. Of course, they have to, it's Lake Brook Drive, but it's a different subdivision behind us, too. And I don't know if y'all knew that they were back there. And I believe that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed.
Name's Brennan Lee, live at thirty-four twenty-seven Lake Brook Drive. Think probably most of this, most everybody here would probably be pretty happy, don't use the stubs. That's the whole problem, all the extra traffic. Our roads are not equipped for it. Like everybody else has said, no sidewalks. There's a lot of people that walk, even now. I mean, there's just no room. So I don't know if that matters to anybody. Also, the water, the drainage, yes, I know, they're going to build retention ponds, all that stuff, but how many times has that happened? And it's failed. And we already have flooding problems as it is. So I have a ditch that runs down in between my house, normal casual rain. I mean, it's a big rock ditch, and it's already at the top. So, I don't know. That's, that's our main concern, just don't stub them. Don't connect.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Good evening. My name is Karen Peck. I live at eleven thirty-six Lake Hill Circle. I am that cul-de-sac in the middle that will not be stubbed, because if you were to stub that, you would have to knock my house down, so. However, on the other two, on, especially on Lakes Edge Drive, as well as on Bushnell, our main concerns, I echo what everyone else here has said. One is the safety of both, of all of our residents, young or old. My three children personally are teenagers now, so I worry about their safety in a different realm than riding bikes and things of that nature. However, we still do go for walks, and it is one of those things where two trucks and some, or two cars, rather, passing side by side with someone walking, yes, we are stepping down into a drainage ditch, absolutely. That's non-negotiable, anywhere you go in the neighborhood. So the safety is absolutely a concern. It's great that this new neighborhood is getting sidewalks, we're not getting that. So I don't agree with the connection, so, and the extra traffic that would come of that. Lake Brook is a straight there, thoroughfare, Lake Brook Drive, so, and we already have an issue with people speeding up and down. So our speed limit is thirty miles an hour, so I have personally clocked people going fifty. So it's already a concern. You add more traffic to it, people using that as a quick get-out of their neighborhood, we're going to have even more speeding issues. So, and nowhere to escape them, except for a drainage ditch, which, if there's any rain at all, those are usually flooded. So last March, we had floods that went up into people's garages and homes, and so that was just, and that was on the back of Lakes Edge Drive. So it was in that floodplain area, however, it went up into garages. So we, we have been there seventeen years and have never seen flooding like that. So the concern with adding a hundred and seventy-seven more homes, so, and again, there are plans for that, but we all know, things look great on paper, not necessarily always in execution. So where would the responsibility lie, if there is extra flooding? Who would that lie with? And then also, the safety issues. And again, I think, I echo what everyone else has said, I think the safety issues could be completely negated if we just don't connect the two. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peck.
Good evening. My name is Judy Alexander, and my husband and I live at thirty-six seventeen Lake Brook Drive. I met with the commission in two thousand and six, when they were planning the arbors, and my concern today is exactly what it was in two thousand and six, it's only increased. The flooding, we moved and built our home in nineteen ninety-five at Lake, in Lake Brook. We're at the very back of the subdivision, and we've got Bushnell Creek, and we're in the curve. We not only get all of the water from Lake Brook that's into Bushnell Creek, when it's a heavy rain, in March of twenty, twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-one, was one of the highs that I've ever seen. But I have pictures that shows back in twenty twenty, twenty-eleven, it's just an ongoing thing. Where we're at, it will get, the Stones River at East Fork gets backed up, it gets full, Bushnell cannot get in. Then all of the rain starts coming back on all of Lake Brook, going all the way up from Compton Road to the very back. Well, we also get it, not only us, but Creek Round, Mitchell Bowman's property, and Lake Brook, Kathy Lee Evans' property, we all get the, the water and the drainage from Lakes Edge. And this has become, what it does, it runs down Lakes Edge, it goes under a covert, goes on to Creek Round. Directly from Creek Round, it follows the path on to thirty-six seventeen Lake Brook, making its way down to Bushnell Creek. All of that is on our property. And it's just, when we add a hundred and seventy-seven more homes, and like Mr. Cunningham said, with concrete, I just don't know what it's going to do. I do, I'm glad that I did see that Mr. Taylor is looking at detention ponds, but I just asked the planning commission to please review all of these detention ponds, how they're going to work, and what is going to happen to Lake Brook. And another issue is just like what everyone else has said, we are not designed to take extra traffic into our subdivision, because the, the road is just too narrow. I do have pictures, if anybody is interested, I did give them to Mr. Taylor, but here shows where it's coming from, Lakes Edge, there is all the property on the very back, and we have a utility pole, and this shows exactly how high the water has gotten into the utility pole. And I gave you a picture showing how the water is, when there is a outbreak. Also, Kathy Lee Evans, the white kitchen fence, the vinyl fence, is her property, and it's showing exactly what kind of drainage that we're getting. And I do appreciate you all letting us make our concerns to you all tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Thanks for coming out. Who else?
These are the same ones that were passed out earlier.
All right.
Hi, I'm Kristy Miller, and I live at thirty-five oh-one Sanford Drive. And my concerns, because I'm not in Lake Brook, are separate from what, what theirs are. So I'm trying to think of, it's really kind of intimidating to stand up here. I have several different concerns. One of them, if you look on, on the plan, where there's an existing right-of-way here of the plan, the farm beside it is Mr. Dixon's farm. It's only two hundred and fifty feet in width. And then on the other side of Mr. Dixon's farm is El Rancho Estates. Those lots cannot be subdivided. So to have a stubbed-out street in that development to a lot that's only two hundred and fifty feet deep, with no ability to extend, is not necessarily a, a good plan. So I, I'm, I think that that's something you guys should consider, maybe eliminating off the plan. And then another concern that I have, or something that I would like to highlight, is I'm a real estate broker here in town. I've been an agent for fifteen years. I know the industry really well. I am not anti-development. I actually agree with the PRD designation. My, what I don't agree with is the, the size of the lots, the seven thousand square foot houses, in such a concentrated amount, like a city development in the midst of existing county. I put together, and I know you guys are all within the industry, basically just lot sizes in comparison to what, what they're proposing. And then all of these lot sizes are proportionate to what is out there. So you've got, like, El Rancho Estates, and then, you know, how many of the, the proposed lots in comparison to what is around it? No city lot actually touches this development. So if you, in the furthest, the closest city lot resides in Hawks Ridge, and, and I've mapped it on the CRS tax map, and the closest is half a mile away. And the smallest lot within that community is ten thousand, and that's in the interior of Hawks Ridge. Now, they did, the developer did take some of my requests in regards to this to heart, and he did put larger lots in the perimeter, but he didn't, he's still got a hundred and thirty-three, seven thousand square foot lots. So that amount of house to house to house, with five-foot setbacks on either side, is just a lot of concrete and a lot of rooftops, that when the next largest, the next smallest lot connecting to the development itself is half an acre. So I just wanted to throw that out to you. I know that you guys are city council, or city versus county, but I feel like we're all in this together. We all want our developments in our, all of Rutherford County, in which we live in, to be conducive and a great place for us to live and to grow in. So I'd like to ask that you guys consider to... So, I'd like to ask that you guys consider to encourage the developer to put more variety of lot sizes. I like the RS twelve. But going from RS twelve straight down to seven thousand, with the magnitude of the amount that he has, is a lot to take on. And then, the last thing that I would like to request, or I'd like to, to draw attention to, is, as a broker, again, with these developers, I saw it back in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, when there's a big boom. Everybody wants to come to Rutherford County because everyone can be a builder. Everyone can sell a house. But then, when the market drops, they're the first to go. I'm not saying that's the case here. But I'm saying, I've seen that over the past three to four years, where we've got a lot of investors coming in and buying up houses in these new developments. And they rent them. Which take away the opportunity for, for actual homeowners to be able to purchase a home. So, I'm asking that you guys would take into consideration minimizing how many could be rentals, offering the, the opportunity for actual homeowners to purchase in there over a, over a, a non-owner occupant. And protecting not only the development, but the investment around it as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Nope. No, we don't, no, 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 no clapping, please. Clapping, booing, any of those things, all it does is add to our time that we're here tonight. So, next, come on up.
My name is Chris Wells. I live at eleven seventy-one Bushnell. I'm in the Lake Brook subdivision. I'm originally from Atlanta. Been here about a little over two years, which is when my wife and I brought, bought the house. Our main purpose for buying the house was the privacy. Privacy, the seclusion, the quietness that we have in the whole Lake Brook subdivision. I'm right in the cul-de-sac, right where one of the cut-throughs is proposed. And I don't want it. None, none of us that live in Lake Brook want our subdivision changed. We're not city taxpayers per se. We're county. But we do all our shopping in Murfreesboro. So, we are paying taxes. We just think we should be heard. We want to keep our subdivision the way it is. I know the flooding is a major concern for a lot of people. This gentleman, in the meeting we had about a month ago, told everybody that the runoff was going to be contained. We can only believe, I don't, I don't know the logistics of that. But we don't have any crime. The more traffic you put through our area, the more potential for crime. I mean, that's just bottom line. These are our homes. I don't think anybody on this council would want your home having the potential for more crime. Because you like where you live, hopefully. Hopefully, you do. We do. But it's our home. This is where we dwell. This is where we have our families. And we want to keep ourselves safe as we can. So, please, think about it. Does the county have any say-so? Apparently, it's a city thing that you guys can just cut into a road. I understand that. Why it's that way, I don't understand. But does the county have any say-so? Is my question. And if not, they should. Again, these, these are our homes. This is our lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
Hello, my name is Terry Cunningham. And I live at eleven forty-eight Lake Sedge Drive. So, my street is one of the dead-end streets that will be stubbed into the new subdivision. Do I want this? Absolutely not. We lived there for twenty-five years. Our kids have grown up on that street. We still have people that walk that street, walk their animals, including myself. One thing that I'm concerned about is wildlife. I know you think, oh, wildlife will come, it will go. But that's something that we really protect in our area and our neighborhood, is the wildlife. We, there are so many neighbors that feed the deer and love to see them and have them stroll around. So, that's one thing that I like. Another thing is, is that each house in Lake Brook subdivision is on at least one-plus acre lot. So, when you're going to put seven houses on an acre, what is that going to do for our subdivision? We enjoy the room that we have on all of our lots. So, we would like to see that change. Instead of having seven houses on an acre, I understand, development happens, growth happens. But to put that many houses on one acre lot compared to what we are used to in our subdivision is a big difference. We do not want extra crime. We do not want extra traffic. We want to be able to walk our dogs and, and have our children be able to play on our roads. But they're not going to be able to do that anymore because of the increased traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Who's next?
My name is Gene Mooney. I'm at thirty-eight, three-five-seven-nine Sanford Drive. And I also represent my son-in-law and daughter, Dr. Barrett. And they're at thirty-eight forty Lake Brook Drive. My big concern is, is water. When you put as much pavement in an area like this, the significant surface water is going to have a, an impact. There's no way around it. I apologize for being late. I got tied up in a traffic jam due to an accident. And then, I remembered I forgot my hearing aids. So, I had to go back and get those. I'm like Mr. Dixon, I can't hear real well. But the one thing I don't understand is how the septic system is going to work. I assume with an untreated water, you're not going to be able to use a spray field. And I guess it's going to be a drain field. Is that correct? Is the water going to be handled through a drain field?
Step system. And I'll let them explain that a little more to you.
And it'll, it'll, all, all that water from all those houses will be dunked into that one location?
I, I think there's several locations within the development, but...
For the septic system?
Step system.
Step system. Well, it's a big septic tank, isn't it, really? And I, and I apologize for not being here earlier for the presentation. I just have seen what was on the website. But I'm concerned that there hasn't been any information that I'm aware of that has identified the groundwater flow and what the groundwater saturation is going to be with all these septic discharges in concentrated areas. And how that's going to affect the surface water also in times of wet, wet times. And if this hasn't been studied, I think it needs to be looked at. And it really concerns me personally because my garden's in a low spot. And I have problems when it rains. And I'll really have problems if more water starts flowing my way. But the water system is, is something that really needs to be looked at very strongly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mooney.
I'm Kathy Lee Evans. And I live at thirty-six twenty-four Lake Brook Drive. And you would be hard-pressed to find any other place in Murfreesboro that has lots as large as there are in Lake Brook, unless you're in a very exclusive neighborhood. Even the reserve doesn't have lots as large as we do. The Falls in the back have much larger lots, at least five-acre lots. I have seven and a half acres. I think Benny and Judy have two acres. And then, Suzie Smith has several acres. And then, Dr. Barrett has about forty-eight acres, I think. Maybe fifty. Yeah. So, my question is, why can't they not make the lots much larger? That would alleviate a lot of the drainage issues. And maybe the drainage is going to work perfectly, just like they told us it would. That's our hope. I'm going to have eight lots backed up right next to my property. Very close. Not too thrilled about that. So, I just wish that they would consider making it a more exclusive, if you want to say exclusive, neighborhood, where the lots are larger. You can build larger houses. Seems like you should make profit off of it if the houses are larger, instead of packing them in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans.
Good evening. My name is Felicia Griner. I reside at thirty-four oh one Lake Brook. I can echo all of the concerns that my fellow neighbors have expressed. One of the concerns that I have is what happens when the construction starts? I don't know if anybody tried, have tried to dig in any of the yards. But you got about a six, six inches of topsoil, and then you're hitting rocks. So, there's going to be a lot of, I'm sure, the explosions or whatever they're going to need to do to break up those rocks to do the building. So, what happens to, to my home and the structure of my home when all of this happens, when they are doing the construction? So, I don't know if that's been addressed or if that will be addressed. Will there be any recourse if there are structural damage to my home? That's something that I would like to get some information about as well. And that's all I have. But like I say, all of the safety issues, the water issues, I want to echo those as well.
Thank you, Ms. Griner.
Evening. My name's Marty Gunt. And I live at thirty-four thirty-one Dutton Court, last house on the left. And all the water that runs through the covert at Dutton Court runs through that corner. All the water that comes, runs through that corner. And it backs up. I just hope they don't make it any worse when they're done. And yes, I'm like the other people. If it does, who's going to take care of it? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gunt.
My name is Alan Miller. And I live on thirty-five oh one Sanford Drive, which is directly behind this proposed development. I've lived in Murfreesboro for fifty-two years. And the north side of town's always been a special place. As I talk to people every day, they come by our community to take tours of, of Sanford Drive, Betty Ford, Lake Brook. The good thing about some of the things I've heard here, I mean, good things about the development is SEC is a great engineering firm. And I believe that they truly believe that they will address the flooding issues if there are any. They're very good at what they do. The traffic issue is going to be a big concern for the people, the community in Last Cassis, Milton, Auburn Town. When you're on ninety-six trying to get into Murfreesboro, it's very difficult. When you're trying, I mean, there's no other ways, other than Sanford Drive, Betty Ford Drive, or ninety-six to get into Murfreesboro, if you're coming from that direction. This property, this development is bordered by a Stones River in the back. There's no way there's ever going to be any ingress or egress in the back, or bridges or anything. To the right of it's the creek. As you're going further east on Compton, there's a cemetery and a TVA electrical station that's going to prohibit the growth and the widening of the road in the future. I know that a traffic study has been done. We've, we've just gotten through a phase in our life in our community where COVID has affected people's jobs. The schools have not been going to schools. The VA hospital hasn't had patients, visiting patients. State Farm Regional Office has shut down. There's been a little bit of change in the way our dynamics in that area has gone. And to say that there's not a traffic, that there's not a traffic issue now, there will be in the future. And on the short-term list, this is planned for two thousand and forty. And it's a sixteen million dollar project. We're doing a renovation to our house right now. We're paying a, a improvement, a dollar a foot tax for improvement for schools. You know, we are blessed for you guys to be able to make decisions for us to be the fifth most, most desirable county in the country. And, you know, this is one of those things where I just, I can't believe at Murfreesboro, in the north side of the town, we've driven around and we've seen similar developments in what it's done to the area. And I hope that you guys would really consider. I know that there's going to be a development there. But this was approved and annexed based on getting sewer, not a step system, and a different, a different approval back in two thousand and six. And nothing has been done since two thousand and six. And I wish you would consider, if approving it, that you would go back to the original approval and not approve this modification.
Who else would like to speak?
I'm David Puckett. I live at fourteen eleven Compton Road. I've lived there fifty years. And I've seen a lot of changes on Compton Road. And one of the concerns I have is with the water that people are concerned about. They've got a right to be concerned about it. Back before Compton Road was widened in nineteen eighty-one, the water would get up between Dutton Court and Emery Court, where you could not travel on Compton Road. That water heads towards Stones River, goes through this property they're talking about developing, and then goes into the Lake Brook property. And also, the creek, Bushnell Creek, would get over Compton Road. There's, I know, I hope these people have done their research on the water because it can really get up. And another concern I have is the traffic. It's constant. And all you've got to do is just come out on Compton Road and go down to the red light at ninety-six about four o'clock in the afternoon. See how many lights you've got to sit through to get under that light. It backs up. It backs up from the red light at ninety-six on Compton Road all the way back to the substation that's sitting a good quarter of a mile from the red light. And another concern I have, or question, concern, where are these children that are going to come into these homes? Where are they going to be going to school? Are they going to be going to a county school? Are they going to be going to a city school? If the city approves this for a city subdivision, will these kids have to go to a city school? Or will they have, or can they go to county school? And so, that's, you know, concern I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Puckett. Who else? Okay. Seeing no one else, we'll close the public hearing. I'll go ahead and remind you now that as we have discussion about all of your questions and try to answer and address those, the public hearing is closed. So, you are not allowed to come back and ask more questions. Or you'll, you'll be here listening to us have the conversation, trying to address all of the questions that you all have asked. So, with that, let's start on some of these questions. I don't know, Mr. Taylor, if you want to address several of them. You know, as, as we would expect, we heard a lot about traffic, drainage, flooding. Yeah, all those things that...
Yes, ma'am. So, a couple of things that I heard, I'll start with the drainage. We have planned for multiple detention ponds on site. I'll get to our plan. So, this area right here, right there, right here, up along Compton, here, and here. So, we are very aware of how much water is flowing through this site. I would say there's a couple of hundred acres that flows through this particular piece of property. That's why we left this area right here open as common area because we know how much water is going to flow through there. is going to flow through there. We don't want that flowing underneath our streets anymore than we have to. So, we've only, we've designed only one connection right there or one crossing. So, we're very aware of that. We feel like we're very good at our job on the stormwater. We do this every day. And if you don't trust us, then it's going to go through multiple reviews at both the city as well as, you know, TDEC even reviews stormwater to a certain extent. So, all of that will be heavily reviewed during the construction plan phase. And so, we're very confident in our design. And as I reassured the people at the neighborhood meeting, if I get to a design and these ponds aren't big enough, then my client just starts losing lots. It's not a, you know, the ponds don't work around the lots. The lots have to work around the ponds, so.
Can you just clarify for us, Mr. Taylor? So, when you kind of drew the line through there of the water, the way it flows through your subdivision?
Yes, ma'am.
That water, then you are directing that water as it flows through? And where, where is it flowing to from there?
Okay. So, so this right here, and this is generally the way it flows today. And so, it flows underneath Compton, down at the bottom of the screen, comes really between the houses along Emory and Dutton, continues north and kind of with this picture hangs a left, if you will, and goes through our property, crosses into the Lake Brook subdivision, crosses under Lake Brook Drive, and then enters Bushman Creek, which is approximately here on this particular drawing. And so, we are going to mimic the way that it works today, post-development.
So, it's flowing through existing drainage ditches or drainage systems outside of the property and then you're going to handle it as it comes through your property?
Yes, ma'am.
And it would not be adding any additional as it comes out the other end? You're not making it worse?
That's right. And what we traditionally see is that with the structured systems, they function better and they see less flooding after the development occurs. It will certainly not get any worse. And so, typically it improves is what we've seen. And so, we have to meet pre versus post requirements from a rate of runoff. And then we also have to meet water quality requirements that the city has outlined, which essentially means we capture the 90th percentile rainfall. And what that means is so 90% of the rains that happen, we capture 100% of that and it leaks out, if you will, over at least 24 to 48 hours. So, it's a very slow, very slow release out of those ponds. That's meant to clean the water, for lack of a better term, let the sediment and other particulates fall out and before it goes on downstream. So, that's intended to protect neighbors as well as protect our waterways, both the streams and the lake and our water sources. We also have to do what they call a stream bank protection volume, which is, equates to the one-year storm event. We do something very similar. We capture it, hold it for 24 to 48 hours. That's meant to protect our streams so that they're flowing full for a less amount of time.
And while we're on the drainage part of things, several of the questions we heard were related to when a development, even with the best of intentions, when it doesn't work? And I know that won't happen in this situation, but let's say in past experience, how has that been dealt with?
So, that was asked at the neighborhood meeting and I told them then, I'll say the same thing tonight, you've got to figure out who's at fault, you know? Was it the contractor? Is it during construction? If it's after construction, was something not built right? Or was it a design issue? Or was it frankly just a storm event that's bigger than anything was designed for? And so, you know, if it's a design issue, it's on mat. It's on SEC. We've got insurance. That's what we're here for. We're not going anywhere. If it's a construction problem, we'll deal with the contractor on that. It should not be an after-construction problem where they didn't build it right because we have multiple levels of safety built into the construction and review process. Now, the city has inspectors that are out there, I won't say daily, but I would say almost daily, looking at the work from the contractor. They're certified, they're making sure that that work is getting completed correctly. And then at the end of the project, before my client can record a plat, start building the first house, I have to go out and certify that everything is installed per the plan, it's going to function like my design. And so, there's multiple layers of safety that go with that.
Can I just ask, and I'm going to ask it in a really basic way, just so you can kind of maybe explain it to me and to the people in the audience. You know, naturally, common sense does tell you the more concrete you put on a piece of property, the water has to go somewhere. And so, how can you say, you know, it's not going to have more, there's not going to be more property leaving there than currently is, you know, than already leaves there, right?
So, those ponds, the detention ponds, they basically act as a bathtub. So, you know, you think about your house, you know, whatever's inflowing, if you turn it all the way open and you've got the small outlet, it's going to start to fill up. And that's exactly how the ponds work. And so, except, you know, our inflow is a lot greater than, you know, the small outlet that we put on the outflow side. So, it builds up and it just starts to release slowly over time. And it, so it maintains, you know, there is water leaving our site today. You heard our neighbors talk about it. And so, we have to maintain that same rate. So, whatever amount of water, however fast it's leaving our site right there, that is exactly what we have to maintain or less in the future.
Yeah, I would just point out, this is, and I'm not trying to argue one way or the other on this, but the gentleman back there that's lived on Compton Road forever, I did too. I was, you know, I was raised on saddle drive right down the road from you. And so, you know, it's a little bit of a testament, there's been a lot of houses built right around that area and the water doesn't come over Compton Road anymore because there were improvements made. And so, hopefully, that's kind of where we try to angle these things is when these developments happen, that the improvements can help the greater area around there. So, just, I'm not arguing one way or the other yet, I'm just kind of pointing that out.
There were some questions about how the step system works. And so, essentially, each lot will have a septic, we call it a step tank in their front yard. Inside that step tank, there is a pump or two inside of there that pumps off what we call the effluent or the gray water. So, it does not pump the actual solids or the waste out. It pumps it back along the street. There's two or three, four, two to three inch force mains that are going to run along our street. Those will come back to the sand filters at the back. Those will run through the sand filter over and over and over again. After it leaves the sand filter?
Excuse me, Matt. Matt, could you ask to put this up on the screen so the folks can see what he's showing on how the step system is going to work?
Yeah, I think, if cable could put that up on the. There we go. And so, those are meant to just represent the force mains that would run along the street. Back here is a sand filter. This is where it would go over and over and over again. This is a very reliable technology. It's a very common technology, it's very old. And so, we know how the sand filters work. Matter of fact, some of, I think some of our schools, some of the older schools had some packaged sand filters that they utilized to treat some of the water several years ago. Some of the earliest municipal, when I say municipal, cities, counties, sewer treatment plants were on, were on a sand filter. And so, whenever it leaves the sand filter, it goes through a UV where if there is a bug or a microbe that are still in there, that UV kills anything instantly before it goes out to the sand, the step fields. The step fields are not spray, I wouldn't describe them as spray fields because all this, the drip areas is all subsurface. Yeah, if we can put that back up, it's always better to see this than me, so. So, all these drip lines will be in the ground. They're little, say they're half-inch lines, they're pressurized. It gets pushed out to those drip fields at a very specific rate. These emitters, they will only release a certain amount of water through the emitter into the ground. The gentleman asked if there was a groundwater flow test. I wouldn't describe it like that, but we have a soil scientist that has already been on site. He's basically found where what we would call a restrictive layer. So, that's either a clay or rock and how deep that is. And then he digs test pits with a representative from TDEC to determine what the flow rate that that soil can take. And then we design those flow rates. That's how we come up with how big this step field has to be essentially. And so, that, and it's not a continuous stream all day long. You might have one zone, if we can put that back, there you go. I will simplify it, say there's going to be three zones. This zone may be running at one time, this zone over here may be running at another time, this zone might be running another time. There's going to be more than three zones out here, so it's not a continuous flow. Matter of fact, your pumps at the house are not running continuously. They're going to fill up, a little balloon is in there, balloon for lack of a better term is in there, floats up whenever it needs to get pumped and it gets pumped up to the sand filter. So, it's a very reliable technology. It's much cleaner than the septic system that is all around us. The septic, there's actually raw sewage going into the ground there. There is, there's not any treatment except for the bugs themselves inside the septic tank. So, this is a much cleaner technology, a much better, much more efficient, much more managed way to handle wastewater. And regardless of whether we had a sewer system here before or not, this does not add pressure to our sewer system and we've had a lot of conversations over that the last two, three years. So, I think that is, that's an attribute to the development, not a hindrance in my mind. I heard some discussions about traffic. You know, the connections, we always hear about more traffic and what it brings with us when we make these stubs into the neighboring communities. I was talking to somebody the other day about, who lives in the reserve. We had those same conversations when we did Valley Brook, which is directly east of there. Like I said, it's very minimal, the crossover traffic. There's not a reason to cut through there. It is a emergency services, it is service delivery. Somebody talked about schools. It lets school buses go through easier rather than getting stuck at a dead end down here. These stubs were obviously very intentionally taken to the property line. You can even, if you look at the aerial, there are some very makeshift cul-de-sacs at the end of these to try to help people turn around. Those aren't standard cul-de-sacs. The right-of-way was taken to the property line 20, 30, 40 years ago for a very specific reason. You know, regardless of what it has been and whether the connection's been there for the last 30 years, that was the intention even back then. And property values, we discussed that at the neighborhood meeting as well. What we have traditionally seen is that new construction raises property values. That's why our entire county's property values have went up 20 or 30 or 40% the last five years is because of all the new construction. If you don't have new construction, you don't see that evaluation increase going up. There was a question about adding a second entrance on Compton. I don't believe that the city staff nor TDOT would support another connection coming from this property due to the proximity between those two. And so, we very intentionally located where our entrance comes on to Compton to be as far away from Emory and as far away from Lake Brook Drive as possible and to help with the site distance. Site distance was a concern that was brought up at the neighborhood meeting. We went back and studied that, provided that back to the traffic, city's traffic department to satisfy that discussion. There was a question about blasting. We went over that at the neighborhood meeting as well. Anybody that's doing blasting on the property, there's a radius. I think it's, I don't remember if it's 500 feet or 250, whatever that radius is, before any blasting is done, somebody will have to come do a pre-blast survey on everybody's property inside that radius. I encourage everybody to let those people come into their house and take pictures. It protects them. It also protects the contractors for false claims. And so, there is a lot of protections that go into that. There are seismographs, those contractors have to carry insurance. All of that is monitored and regulated by the Fire Marshal's Office on a regular basis. Another good thing about the step system versus the sewer is those force mains are about three feet in the ground. Steps, sewer main will be six, eight, 10, 12 feet in the ground. And so, there's less likelihood of blasting and a less severe amount of blasting that comes with the step system because of the decreased depth of that utility. Somebody asked about city versus county schools. I'm happy to answer that. You know, our residents would have the ability to go to either. They are both city and county taxpayers, so they can utilize either one that they want to there, so. Those were the questions I wrote down. I may have missed one. I'll be happy, if I did, please point it out.
Matt, what, there was a question about limiting the, yeah, the non-owner occupant, whether that's, can even be done? I think Mr. Ives has addressed that in the past where that, that's not, well, anyway, I'll let you, let y'all address that question.
I will say that my client is, they're developer, they will, they're building to sell. They're individual lots and so, it's not a rental, we are not a rental company. I'll say that. And so, I don't know that we have anything written in the PRD regarding rental, but that is not our intention, so.
One of the things, just to build on that a little bit, we might consider, whether or not it's tonight or between now and the time it gets to the council level, because I know there's been a lot of conversation about this same thing at council. One of the ways that kind of seems to me to be a, you know, an efficient way to do that is to disallow sales to, on the initial sale at least, to the big commercial type, you know, whatever you call that, the, you know, securitized REITs where, you know, you can't have one company come in there and buy 50 homes, right? And then they turn all of them into rental homes that you would sell those to individuals. Now, it gets a little more touchy once the individual owns it, right? To do one at a time, but then at that point, it's one at a time and everybody wants their property rights. But, on the get-go here, is that something you guys would at least consider and bring that back to us as far as?
Yes, absolutely. We can work, I don't know that I've seen that language, but we're happy to work on that language between now and council if y'all see fit, so.
That, I think that would be a big help. That at least carves out the capability of, you know, 50 of them just immediately being rentals like that. And at this price point, I don't really see that happening anyway, but I guess crazier things have happened too, so I think that would be helpful. I had one other question too while, go ahead.
Yeah, you go ahead. I've got some more too.
I'm going, yeah, I'm going off a totally different direction, so.
So, there was a, Matt, you may need to answer this or somebody, it's staff. There was a comment about the stub into Mr. Dixon's property and the fact that the 250 feet or whatever and whatever else was bordering his property would not allow, I'm maybe putting words in, I think it was Ms. Miller that said it, that you couldn't even make the connection. Is that true or not true? Or has anybody looked at that or?
So, I'd know of no restrictions that would prevent Mr. Miller, his property from, is this for your subdivision? Okay. So, so it looks like that for where Mr. and Ms. Miller live along Sanford, that maybe there is no subdivision there allowed, but is Mr. Dixon's property a part of that?
It was initially in the beginning. I don't know that it is part of it. He was the brother of Mr. Sanford who developed it.
Okay. Okay. So, I've never looked at this piece of paper, but I'm sure Ms. Miller's right. She does this for a living. So, you know, if Mr. Dixon's property can be divided, maybe there's some validity in that. I don't know that me and my client have a strong opinion on that stub and the desire to have that there or not, so.
I apologize. I don't need to be laughing, but we've, for the last two months, we've had several of these come through where we've had stubs and within this group and at the city council level, we've had some very difficult and complex discussions about stubs, okay? So, like, I think I know where he's going, that's why I kind of started laughing. I was kind of questioning the same thing and, you know, I kind of hesitated a little bit, but as far as that stub that would be to the east, you know, I'm just not a fan of stubs to nowhere in general. Now, if it's, you know, on the same token, I will have to say to everybody in here, you know, I, Mr. Taylor is correct and the fact that, you know, Lakes Edge and Bushnell, those are not cul-de-sacs, those are stubs. And I will say this, I'd be curious to know, somebody who's. And, and I, I will say this, I, I'd be curious to know, somebody who, who's in here probably can tell us, Matthew or Sam or someone, but there was a lot of kinda discussion also about kinda city versus county. I mean, that's a county subdivision and it's stubbed out. And so, I'm, you know, one of the things that's kinda been going through my mind is if they just wouldn't never have annexed this fifteen years ago, if they wouldn't have asked for the annexation, this same exact thing could be happening in the county. It'd be a step system, it'd be the same number of houses, and it wouldn't have sidewalks and it wouldn't have the same drainage requirements that we require at the city. It wouldn't have city police coverage, it wouldn't have fire coverage, you know? And it would, you know, streetlights, none of that stuff would be happening, and it's plain as day could happen in the county. And so, I'm struggling a little bit with that just personally, and I, that kinda came out of left field, but since we were talking about stubs, it's kind of a weird thing, but the more stubs you have, the more roads you have coming in and out, the less traffic it puts on one of them. And that's kind of a weird thing because, you know, look, I agree with everybody out here. If I'm sitting there on a road that's been stubbed out for a bunch of years and somebody's now is finally gonna connect to it, it's a bummer. I lived right on a stub road for six or eight years, and so, I worried about that same exact thing happening to me every day. I moved before it happened, but I knew it was gonna happen, I knew it was possible. So, it's just kinda, I, I struggle with that because I feel I, I have empathy for it, but I also know that if I think about city versus county, I mean, it's plant, you know, the, the proof's kinda in the pudding, they stubbed it out.
They planned it twenty or thirty years ago when they did it, that they, they planned the stubs.
One, one question I had, I'm gonna go a different direction here, but I, I don't think anybody brought it up, but I would, somebody kinda touched on it a little bit that I'd be curious about. Is construction entrance, I, we need to...
We did, we talked about that at neighborhood meeting, and we told people then, we would not send any of our construction traffic for, you know, the infrastructure construction through their development. We would physically put up barricades during construction to keep that from happening. Now, once it's a public street, it gets a little more difficult. I don't have much ability to regulate that. But as far as dump trucks and, you know, lowboys and things like that, all of that for us is gonna come off Compton. And we, we have subs, we have the ability that whenever we come before this body with a preliminary plat, that we're showing barriers to prevent that construction to happen, except when we're doing the immediate tie-ins for either utility or the road itself. And we've been very successful at that, sometimes more so than we wanted to and for longer periods of time maybe, but.
I just wanna make some clarifications, just for understanding. We already have an approved PRD that already has access points to Bushnell and Lake's Edge, already approved, that you wouldn't even have to have been here, correct?
Correct.
All right. Also, that PRD that's already approved, that is already there, has approximately thirty to thirty-five more units on it than we currently have on this new amended PRD, correct?
Correct, thirty.
So, we're lowering the density on the same amount of lots. We're going to a step system instead of sewage to lessen the, the impact on the sewage system. The stubs that were on the west side of the property were on the original PRD already, so we're, there's actually less density to run through those stubs. Just wanna clarify all those points.
Matthew, wait.
Yep. Mr. Wright, just to, just to clarify, when this went to city council back in two thousand and six, it went with a recommendation from the planning commission to connect all three stubs, Bushnell, Lake's Edge, and Emery Court. City council modified the, the approval and conditioned it upon two of those not connecting. That was Emery Court, and I don't remember if it was Bushnell or Lake's Edge, but one of the two was, Lake's Edge was, was, the council conditioned its approval on those connections not being made. So, they, they are, at staff's request, consistent with our current subdivision regulations and design guidelines, they have, they're proposing to make those three connections
Thanks for the clarification.
In the revised plan.
Sure. Yeah, he's addressed all my questions.
I, I guess I, I'm gonna come back to this, I'm gonna come back to this east side stub and just kinda, you know, if it's, if that piece of property right there, that's that little sliver, I mean, look, stubbing out to something, and again, from a planning perspective, stubbing out to something that has a chance to develop and all that kinda stuff, that clearly, I, I, you know, I even am not the greatest fan of some of that sometimes, but I, I, I get it and I understand it. That just seems like it can't, you know, you can't get to Sanford, to Sanford, you've gotten, you know, how many houses could really be built in that strip? I mean, do we really, what, what are we really gaining within our neighborhood regulations by having that stub out to the east? Sorry, it's shaped different on one, one screen than the other, but the, is that really for sure in our subdivision regulations that that's gotta be there?
You know, I, I think that in looking at the sub regs, and I've got that pulled up.
That one. There's nothing that can go right here.
Mr. LaLance, if I may, I think the stub is for possibilities. Twenty years ago or whenever the county subdivisions were built to the west, no one knew what was gonna happen to this property. There was an assumption that probably it would develop, and so, stubs were established. If it does develop, stub, connect the stubs. If it never develops and it gets farmed forever, you don't connect the stubs. Same way with the property to the east. It looks today like that might be a difficult property to develop, but I don't think any of us can sit here and say that it can't be developed. Someone someday will figure out, I'm quite sure, a way to do something with that property and having the possibility then, the, the ability to have a second connection and not have to simply run one street all the way from Compton Road back to the back with houses on one side of it, to have some ability to have another exit point, entrance point, would make sense in the future. So, to deprive, to, to eliminate that possibility today by not creating that stub, I think would be a big mistake from a planning standpoint and for the future of someone that's gonna try to do something with that property.
Yeah, I think the, I think the point I'm making is not that it's not developable, but is it, again, back to that oversimplified idea of, you know, if there can be six, eight, ten homes or something like that that might go there, is that enough to warrant running? I mean, you know, maybe that just means only six, eight, or ten whatever go back through this, and why would you? But I don't know, I mean, I guess I'm a little unclear on whether or not, can it ever get over to Sam, Sanford?
So, the, I've read the document that Ms. Miller provided, and it does say in there that none of the lots can be subdivided into smaller lots.
On Sanford?
Yes, sir.
Is that what would have to happen to run a road through it?
I, that would be my interpretation. Mr. Ives might have a dirt different, but I would assume there, there could probably be some governmental act, uh, action that could overrule those private restrictions.
I, I do believe that someone could buy a lot and house on Stanford, tear it down and build a road through it. You can't subdivide it?
All right.
But regardless, even if it doesn't go to Stanford, something is going to happen on this strip of property. And it makes sense to have the opportunity for two ways in and out of that property. There's no, no good reason to not do it. We, looking at today, maybe that's gonna be hard to develop, but I'm quite confident that someone is going to come in someday with a plan for that property other than being green space.
I tend to agree. Chase says it's the attorney in us, David. What do you think about that?
While y'all are pondering that, I did wanna mention one other thing, and we can come back, come back to that. Another question that came up a couple of times was regarding if this developer were to sell the property to another developer and then make changes or whatever. So, just wanna clarify that regarding the plan development, please.
Yes, ma'am. I think I just take advantage of the reason we do the plan developments is it, it is locking, whether it be my client, the current property owner, or the, or another developer into this plan and the commitments made inside of here. That's why we write it all down. And so, if somebody wants to change it, just like we're proposing to change the previous commitment, we have to come back through this, the neighbors have to make, be made aware, have to have two public hearings, likely they'd have to have neighborhood meetings. And so, this is the process for if somebody wants to go back on the, on this, these commitments. And so, it, I think it works very well and holds our feet to the fire.
And, and that's just, just for clarification for everyone, that is not true in all zoning classifications. So, there are some zoning that we have where one developer might say they're doing one thing and then somebody else could come in and do something different, but not in a planned development like this, so. I'll go ahead and go on record stating I'm in favor of the stub to the east.
All right, yeah, I'm, really, at the end of the day, if it can't go to Sanford, there really can't be much that can go through there anyway if it does stub and does come out to Compton, so I, I don't guess it's, I, I, you know, okay, so I'm, I'm all right with that too, I'm not gonna, but one of the things I, I did also hear and something that just is a point of interest for some of the comments about the county roads versus the city roads, there was something that was brought up specifically about a turn lane into Lake Brook. That is absolutely something that can be brought up to your county commissioners, to the road board, and it makes sense, I'm serious. I'm not, I mean, I'm not putting that off on anybody else. That's, if that's, if that's needed right there, that has, you know, that's, if it's already needed, which is what it sounded like, then that oughta be discussed, and it really is, you know, separate from, from this development. So, anyway, that's something that you could do. I, I'm gonna say one other thing or two here and then probably head on here, but I, look, I, I wouldn't, there, there was something in, in the, in the designs of these houses that I would say I would like to be looked at by the time this gets to city council. And really, it is in the, the aesthetics from, when I look at the back and the sides of the houses, you know, it just, there's gonna be a lot of backs of houses that are gonna be looking out, and, you know, I've heard some comments made about, well, what's next door, whatever, and I just don't care. I mean, I, I mean, it's, those flat, big, broad with one or two windows in the back where you got a big painted surface right there is not a great look. You can go down eight forty right now and see a, a neighborhood that's kinda going in, that's got some, a similar kind of a, a feel to that. And I mean, it's like punches you in the face from the interstate, and I just kinda, I'd really like for the developer to work on that a little bit to see if there's something that we can do, add some kinda, some detail in there that might, that might make that a little less bold, is the best word I can use. So, by the time that gets to city council at least, I'd love to see that happen. I'm just gonna take a, a general stab here and say, I mean, I, you know, struggle with this a little bit, I got friends in the audience and, you know, I grew up in the area and all those kinds of things, and I feel it. Where I grew up on Saddle Drive, what's right behind my old house right now is that whole neighborhood that's on the old Pitts Farm, you know, which is exactly this. It could all be happening in the county, okay? I mean, and we're, we're sitting here today because this thing got annexed fifteen years ago. This could just as easily be happening over at the county building. And, and honestly, I'll tell you guys, from, from our, my perspective, I don't say our, but my perspective, this is, this is not up here on the screen right now, but it's two point two six units per acre. That's the lowest density development that I think we've seen at, with this body, one of the three at least lowest density developments that have come through here in my seven-plus years on the council. And we've been trying to make a point to the development community to say, we really want single-family detached homes rather than more town homes, more apartments coming to the city and reducing that density. And we're, we're asking for three point eight units per acre or less. This is two and a quarter. So, I, you know, I get where everybody is on this and I understand it, but we're going from two hundred and seven to a hundred and seventy-seven. It could happen in the county. The drainage shouldn't be worse. I have seen many, many times in the last seven years where it has gotten better when the development happens. That's my own personal experience with it. And so, I just got, I mean, I got no basis to not support it with, with all those things being said from kind of a big picture planning perspective for this city. So, I, if anybody doesn't have any questions, I'll probably move ahead. I'll make a motion we approve it with staff comments.
I'll second it.
A motion and a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much to everyone for coming out tonight, and see you again at council.
I was gonna second you. Beat me to it.
The room clear out?
I know, she's...
Two units an acre, man.
Can't beat that.
Well, that's why I wanted to bring up, look, there's already an approved, a little thing already.
Okay. Outcut. Groups switched over here. Try to get on to these remaining public hearings. So, if we can go ahead and have everybody move on out into the, what do you call that? Rotunda, to finish your conversations out there, we appreciate it. So, we can continue with our remaining public hearings tonight. Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing regarding the annexation petition and plan of services for approximately three point three acres located along Joby Jackson Parkway and Elam Road. Sherry Elam-Yoakli et al. is the applicant. Ms. Rush, good evening.
Good evening, Chair Jones, Commissioners. The proposal is for an annexation. We received a petition to annex the property that's shown on the screen. It's three point three acres located along the south side of Joby Jackson, west of Elam Road and west of Highway twenty-four. The property is in the urban service area. There is a simultaneous application to zone this property to general industrial, which is similar to the zoning that's in the surrounding area. Currently, the property does have a single-family residence on it. The city had prepared, the staff had prepared a plan of services, and based upon that study, the city can provide services immediately upon annexation, including to that single-family residence. There was also stated the future for potential development on the property, including relocation of the Elam Road. City would be able to provide services for future development as well. The planning commission, we were asking if you could conduct a public hearing and then formulate a recommendation to the city council. I'm available for any questions if you have any.
Okay.
Madam, madam chair, I would mention that you received via email a, an updated plan of services earlier this afternoon, and a hard copy of that has been placed on your desk for your reference.
Thank you, Mr. Bully. Any questions before we open the public hearing? All right, we will open the public hearing and ask anyone to come forward that would like to speak regarding this annexation petition. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Comments, questions, and/or motion regarding this item?
Motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's an emphatic aye, you guys, I'm sorry. I was really excited about that.
All right. Next, we will have the companion zoning application for approximately three point three acres located along Joby Jackson Parkway and Elam Road to be zoned GI, general industrial, simultaneous with annexation. Kim Lee-Horn is the applicant. Ms. Rush?
Thank you. So, the three point three acre parcel is proposed to be rezoned from what's in the county as residential medium density to when it gets annexed, if it gets annexed... county as residential, medium-density, to when it gets annexed, if it gets annexed into the city as general industrial. The general industrial zoning district is intended to provide areas where the principal uses are wholesaling, warehousing, limited manufacturing, and which have major transportation routes where there are access to those things. It also can allow for commercial types of developments. Nearby could be residential. So, these are more of the uses that are not the heavy industrial, obnoxious uses that would generate potential for environmental impacts like air quality or odors or noise. The subject property is in the urban growth boundary and properties to the north are zoned RM in the county. There is limited, mostly primarily vacant agricultural land on the surrounding properties. The Murphy's Borough 2035 comprehensive plan map does indicate that light industrial would be, oh, pardon me, I lost my place for the moment there. So, the general industrial zoning is a newer zoning district and it was approved after the adoption of the 2035 plan. So, as such, it's not listed as any compatible zoning districts. However, based on the land use characteristics, the general industrial would be consistent with the business park and light industrial land use designation that's currently in our 2035 plan. It would allow for businesses, offices, and light industrial developments, which is the same that general industrial will allow for. So, based upon that, staff does believe that this is a consistent land use zoning that's proposed with our existing land use designation. Staff supports the requested GI for the following reasons. The GI zoning for the subject property would be compatible with the existing zoning of the surrounding properties to the east, south, and west. In addition, the industrial business park uses noted above, the GI zoning district would permit interstate-oriented commercial uses, which would also be appropriate for this location considering that it's adjacent to Highway 24 and an off-ramp. Staff is asking that the Planning Commission consider this item and formulate a recommendation to the city council. The applicant is here this evening and available to answer any questions if the commission has any. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? We will open the public hearing and ask anybody if they would like to come forward to speak regarding the zoning for this property. And seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Comments, questions, or a motion?
If no questions, I make a motion. We approve, subject to all staff comments. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next, we have an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 1.7 acres located along New Salem Highway. The estate of William O'Ginno is the applicant. Ms. Rush?
So, we have received an annexation petition from the applicant, the property owner, to annex the property that is along New Salem Highway. It's currently in the county. It is within the city's urban growth boundary. It is currently a commercial designation in the county. The applicant did submit an accompanying rezoning application that would propose zoning of CF along this property as well as commercial zoning to the property to the west. The applicant is here today to answer any questions. Staff does recommend approval of this annexation and available for any questions if the commission has any.
And once again, there was on this one, an updated plan of services that's been provided to you as well.
All right. We will open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak regarding this annexation petition. Do we have anyone here tonight to speak on that? So, we will close the public hearing. And again, questions, comments, and/or a motion?
No questions. I'll move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And the zoning application for that property for approximately 1.7 acres located along New Salem Highway to be zoned to CF simultaneous with annexation, and then approximately 2.8 acres to be rezoned from OG and CF to PCD, the O'Ginno's at Foxcroft PCD, and approximately 2.2 acres to be rezoned from OG to CF. Melissa O'Ginno Barnett is the applicant. Ms. Rush?
So, the subject property for the rezoning is a total of 6.7 acres and it's located along the north side of New Salem Highway and east of Casey Lane. The property is primarily undeveloped, other than the single-family residence for the piece that's located within the unincorporated county. The rest of it is vacant. The district that they're requesting for commercial fringe, as you could see on the map that's on the screen, and the commercial fringe district is intended to permit development and general commercial uses along major arterial streets, but not be a nuisance immediately surrounding to residential development. The approximately 2.8 acres would be rezoned to a planned commercial district, the O'Ginno's at Foxcroft PCD, which would allow a limited number of uses that are similar to those allowed in the CF, but much more restrictive. The uses that they're proposing would be daycare center, philanthropic institution, art studio, barber, beauty shop, business communication service, dentist, financial service, flower shop, interior decorator, karate, medical laboratory, medical office, office, optometrist, weight control services, specialty shop, veterinary office, or similar with no retail, or veterinary clinic with no boarding. So, those are very much destination types of uses. So, it does not need a frontage along a major roadway. It's not something that would attract people to come off of a street as they do a drive-by for, say, a restaurant or for retail. So, these are very specific for somebody who was gonna go see their optometrist or, or flower shop in particular. So, so those were lists, lists of uses that are included in the planned development. They're also including a road connection from Foxcroft to Casey Lane. That road would be developed with the subdivision and with the initial phase-one development of the site. The owner has indicated that they would like to go into contract for a veterinary clinic, so that road would be constructed fairly quickly if the property is annexed and zoned as requested. The applicant's representative, Matt Taylor from SEC, is here who can also present information on the proposal. Staff is recommending approval of the zoning based upon the following reasons. That the CF zoning is compatible with the commercial development that's occurring around this area, in particular, the New Salem Highway and Casey Lane, and it is a lesser commercial zoning district that allows that buffer between a residential use and other commercial uses nearby. That the planned commercial district is intended for destination commercial uses, such as the veterinary clinic and the other ones that we had just listed, and that development on the subject property would facilitate the extension of Foxcroft and its connection to Casey, which would be a benefit for the city. So, at this time, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission discuss the proposed rezoning and conduct a public hearing and then formulate a recommendation for the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rush. Mr. Taylor, did you have a, are you gonna present on this tonight?
Yeah, I loaded it before the meeting. It should be on, yeah, there we go.
I do have a brief presentation, just go over a few details. So, I am Matt Taylor from SEC. I'm accompanied by Mr. Chris Bratcher, the owner's representative, as well as Ms., I call her Ms. Melissa, the owner of the property. So, so, as Ms. Rush said, property's a little bit over 10 acres. It's got a couple of agricultural buildings and a single residence. That residence today would be removed prior to the second reading of annexation. It is zoned a mixture of OG and CF today, as well as a little bit of unincorporated RM in the county. This is looking into the site across Highway 99, looking into the site from the end of Foxcroft. And then this is the recently constructed apartments to the north and the longstanding CVS located at the southwest corner of this property. The plan itself, the green areas are the PCD, your planned commercial development. The red areas are the areas requested to be commercial fringe. So, really, the green areas are the reason for the request. The northern building there, in the upper right-hand corner, is proposed to be a vet clinic. Currently, the OG does not allow the vet clinic, and so this is a good opportunity to come through with a firm commitment. The southern building, we do not have a defined user there today, but we have basically mimicked the size building and layout for the vet clinic. And we're gonna, we've set forth some use standards as well as architectural standards on that. The rest of the property would be all commercial fringe, so about seven and a half acres. Each site would have its own formal open space on the individual lot. And then, of course, everything would have underground utilities. And as you see, this plan does complete the construction of Foxcroft from the east over to Casey Lane. So, the vet clinic is the primary use here, but we've allowed for a variety of other very destination-oriented neighborhood-type uses that are friendly and cohesive with the adjoining neighborhood. This full list is inside the pattern booklet. Architecture, quality materials, every building here will meet the design guidelines. We have limited the building height on the PCD portions to 30 feet out of respect for the adjoining residential neighborhood. And then, we've tried to design the architecture to have a residential character. So, sloped roof, asphalt shingles. So, I think it's got a very residential feel. As I mentioned earlier, the construction of Foxcroft, and then we will also have interconnectivity between each of the lots to try to cut down the trips on the major roads. And then buffering will be in compliance with the city's zoning ordinance, so it'll be located along the north as well as the east sides as shown here. We did have a neighborhood meeting roughly a month ago and we had exactly one couple show up. They were not against the project. They were more inquisitive. So, it was a very lightly attended meeting, maybe the quickest one I've had.
Need one of those every once in a while, don't you?
Yes, ma'am. Maybe it's balancing tonight.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Taylor before we open the public hearing?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. All right, we'll open the public hearing and ask anybody if they would like to come forward to speak on this zoning application. And seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Any further questions, comments?
I'm excited for it. I think it's a great addition. I grew up driving right past that for most of my life and I'm excited to see something go there.
Would you like to make a motion?
I would go, thank you, Vice Chair. There are no further questions. I will make a motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Second.
Motion and any seconds. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Next, we have staff reports and other business where we do, as far as we know, have one item under here for business tonight. It is a mandatory referral for the city to receive donation of a 60-foot strip of prologis land that extends to Elam Road, and the future swap with the owner of property to the south of this 60-foot strip with another 60-foot strip, some 150 feet south of this strip. Who wrote this?
Is that a technical term?
Mr. Ives.
This is a lawyer's legal description.
The explanation was brilliant, I thought.
Hey, and, and Mr. Ives, I'll go ahead and tell the cable department, if y'all could put up my computer.
And let me just go ahead and say, this is for the future construction of Distribution Drive from Elam Road to Elam Farms Parkway, and the city of Murphy's Borough is the applicant. Mr. Ives?
Thank you, Madam Chair and ladies and gentlemen. If we get the picture up here.
There we go, there we go.
Sometime back, it was planned to have a road connect off of the current Elam Road, which is the north-south road that now runs in, turns into Joby, connects with Joby Jackson, to connect that to a road over to the east. And a parcel was, that we say, called Parcel B, I think, was identified as, as a connector, as a part of that road. Well, plans have changed. The second FedEx facility out here off, is under construction. I think it's actually fairly close to being complete. And as a part of that construction, they have donated by plat a, the, what's labeled Parcel A, which is a 60-foot right-of-way, and then they're actually building that portion of Distribution Drive. So, in order to get it to connect, which it doesn't today, so we, now, they had planned before and still planned to donate Parcel B to the city. So, we are asking that you approve, recommend approval for us, for the city to accept Parcel B. And then, in the future, we are working with the landowner to the south of Parcel C to swap that 60-foot strip for what I've labeled as Parcel C. That'll be substantially in that area. We may, it may not be exactly there. There may be a curve to the south to create a little more usable space north of that road. So, basically, we're asking to simply the city to accept Parcel B and authorize, approve the plan in the future to swap that piece for another piece to the south to complete the, uh, construction of Distribution Way. And given that FedEx, second FedEx project is fairly close to completion, I would expect that to be sort of a front burner, top-shelf priority to get Distribution Way constructed in the very near future.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Ives? He worked long and hard on this description now, so.
Some 15 minutes, I'm sure.
I think we need a, a motion to approve?
Please.
Golly, I'll do it.
I know it's a tough one.
Motion to approve and a second. All in favor, please state aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ives. It's an impression.
Right on a limb.
And did we have any other staff reports or other business tonight?
Madam Chair, I have, I have one reminder for anybody who has not gotten all of their state-mandated continuing education requirements.
Yes.
We have until December 31st to do that. Ms. Jacob is in the process of making sure her list is updated and we'll be sending that out in the next day or two. And I think there are some, if you, if you don't have all four of your hours, I think we can get you some links to some videos to, to make sure that you get all trained up and we satisfy state requirements. That's all I've got.
Sure. This group of responsible adults has gotten that done by now.
Don't, don't look at the report when it comes out, then.
I mean, mine's done.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. We will get on that. Any other business and we, not?
Nothing else for me. Hey, Rick.